Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We bring this meeting to order. First on the agenda is the chairman's review. Mr. Presby was in town. Next is the acceptance of the amendments. We do have amendments from August 15, 2016. I have a motion to accept them. Second, any discussion? Any in favor?
Aye.
I need votes. Correspondents? Okay. Next is make the subdivision land development, Invenergy Thermal Development LLC, Clear River Energy Center, Long Lake Road, Fargo, map 120, lot 7, map 135, lot 2, map 137, lots 1, 2, 3, and 21, map 153, lots 1 and 2. Masked plan review informational meeting continued from June 20th, July 11th, through August 15, 2016. So, this evening we have the advisory opinion which was drawn by Michael Tom. And gentlemen, would you like to leave us to this?
What we're gonna do this evening is, you guys of us all had this, I mean, we go this Friday. So, we were just gonna poll the board if you had any changes that you wanted to make to this.
Okay.
You articulate those. We could go one member at a time. And I think for the benefit of the public here, we of course articulate those here and decide upon them tonight. And then this opinion would get published, I assume, and do it on the town's website immediately thereafter.
Correct. So, we'll meet, and this evening we'll be looking for two votes. One would be to either accept or accept with revisions the advisory opinion, and then also we need to vote on the noise ordinance again, in which there's been significant correspondence back and forth on that, which I believe everyone has seen. It was the...
Are you ready, sir? Give us a mic. Please take it out. Is it just the octave band, or is it the entire noise?
It would be in compliance, whether it's in compliance with the noise ordinance, or if we're within the octave band and the noise ordinance itself. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Tremblay last time brought up a point about the effect on wildlife. And I believe, if you read your emails, you're reminded that question had been answered. So, that hopefully, because that answer is in place, hopefully that will allow us to go forward. Okay? So, gentlemen, we have a choice, and I'll yield to what you'd like to do. There are several sections, obviously, to this advisory opinion. Would you care to go page by page, or would you care to simply give your comments to somebody here? The second one? Nice. Everyone feel a bit about that? Okay. All right. Chris, in that case, we're gonna start reading.
After reading through the advisory opinion, I actually don't have any additional changes I would make. Everything seemed to be pretty clear, straightforward, referenced some of the material that we comprehended, planned, so I don't have any additional changes I would advise.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I concur. I don't see any changes necessary. Okay.
This is not as to content as much as it is to form, and it's just in the discussion part. But on pages six and seven, there's a lot of stuff taken right out of the PUD's advisory opinion. And I wonder, this is the planning board's advisory opinion. And referencing the PUD's opinion that they came up with is fine, it's just I'm not sure if we need all these paragraphs in it. And like I said, it doesn't take away from our opinion, it's just I'm just not sure if we need the two pages of paragraphs that quote directly from the PUD's advisory opinion. This is our advisory opinion, not theirs. And it's one thing to incorporate a paragraph that summarizes their points, but not necessarily just reiterating all half of their opinion.
I would say that I kind of fall back to the job here. I'm supposed to reach out to all the other departments, right? We did that back a long time ago, now, let's say, maybe eight, if I remember. But all I had at that time was an agreement that was executed, I believe, between, by Kirkwood and the clerk, Invenergy. So, now that we have something different than that, we felt like it shouldn't be. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I think it only adds to, I think, the main theme here, which is water. What a quantity is a big deal.
Right.
So, it is, it is two pages, but it's, I don't know. I think it, I think it would do more harm to take it out, less harmful, leaving it to move in.
Okay. I was wondering about why we would do two, two years, one half a year.
Right. And then, PUD is an intervenor now, right? So, they'll probably say the same thing, but it shows that the planning board at least was looking at this from all angles. If you were aware of this at the time, you made your decision to...
That was the only comment I had.
Thank you.
My comments are that I think it was well thought out, well put together. It touches upon the critical areas as well. Serious conditions of view with that being water quantity and quality, as just previously mentioned on Tom. It notes specific situations with regard to the comp plan, and how this does or does not fit. Also addressing serious conditions of noise. I'm comfortable with all the information compiled here in this advisory. Thank you.
I'm comfortable with the statement also. It addresses the point that it's dealing with this particular parcel of a land and the surrounding area, what the surrounding area represents. As far as the PUD's information, the planning board would under normal process accept and entertain information from all sources throughout the term, our experts, as well as the base support for the term. So, I have no problem with that. Actually, I think we did a good job.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's fine the way it's written. It checks everything we've gone through, cites everything that's supposed to be said, so no recommendations for any change at all. Okay? Thank you very much. Okay. So, it appears that we don't have any specific changes for it. So, we would be looking to vote on this in its entirety. So, should we do the noise first, and then the opinion? All right. So, gentlemen, we're going to do a vote, if you will, on the noise. And the first will be on the low octave band. If that is successful, then that will go to the entire recommendation too. And this is a recommendation to the zoning board that they grant the motion, that the zoning board will grant the special use permit for the noise ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, how would we do that if we don't have an assurance about the 43 DVA that we're talking about? That's the one...
Our expert has testified, Mr. Hessler, has testified that he is comfortable with the fact, with proper lagging, that it is possible to meet that standard. So, with the assumption that that can be met, and it's his opinion that it can be met, then it is possible to grant, or to make the advisory, I'm sorry, to make the recommendation to the zoning board, that as long as it can be met, that they could.
That's not the same thing as Invenergy saying they'll do it.
Whether you're comfortable with that or not is a separate issue, and that's what your vote would be. So, if you feel you have enough information to make that recommendation, then you vote yes. If you're not comfortable, then you would vote no.
Hold on. Hold on. Mr. Chairman, just for, to focus here. If you look at page 18, in your opinion, the second to last paragraph, that's where Mr. McLeod explained that it's the planning board that will issue the advisory, both EFSP and the zoning board regarding the requested octave band noise waiver special use permit. Octave band noise waiver slash special use permit. And then it carries over on to page 19. The way that this is written up here, the second paragraph, accordingly, it is our opinion that the Clear River Energy Center facility will be able to comply with our noise ordinance, provided the zoning board review grants Invenergy a waiver slash special use permit, exempting the crack from the octave band limits of the noise ordinance. So, that's how this reads now.
Yeah.
So, that's what you're essentially advising the zoning board as to whether or not you want, wish to, ask them to grant the waiver of the octave. That's going on in Mr. Hessler's email review that states that it's Spectra that is creating impacts right now, and that he feels that Invenergy's facility will not add to that. That's what he's maintained throughout. So, that's what you're, what you're voting on.
Have we ever suggested waivers, but with contingencies attached to it?
I believe we have.
And that's where my direction is going. I don't mind granting a waiver as long as we have some sort of recourse if that's not met.
Yes.
Correct. If that can't be in place, then that's a different story.
Correct. But the town's ordinance is what you're basing it on. So, if they can't meet that ordinance, then there should be penalties in place. So, when I, in my original opinion, I said that the council should probably come up with something that would be more punitive than is currently in place, in case they don't meet it. Also, if they, I believe there's a discussion in the emails about Invenergy putting up a bond also, to ensure that they meet that. So, Mr. Hessler has stated that it is possible for them to meet it if it's constructed correctly. So, we could mitigate it while we're doing by having them set a bond, or ask the zoning board to do it. Can zoning set up a bond?
I wanted to, I just was talking to Michael about that. They have correctly, wrong rejected request to set a bond, so you should know that.
Okay.
We can still ask for it.
Right. Just...
Would that be part of a motion?
Can you repeat that? Could you step me?
Sorry. Would that be part of a motion if we...
Yeah, it absolutely could be. I mean, Invenergy so far has rejected that. I don't see where it is unreasonable for us to come up with a dollar figure on what it would be to mitigate noise based on the lagging and what's already in our opinion here.
But that won't stop the...
Mr. Chairman, could I, could I wave it? Wait. Yes, sure. On page 20, if you look at the second bullet, these are, the bullets are recommendations to the EFSP. And these recommendations are actually requested conditions of the EFSP approval. This means that if the EFSP agrees to these conditions, any violation of these conditions would bring down the power of the EFSP on the project. So, if you read the second bullet, what we recommend to the EFSP is the following condition regarding the noise. There should be continuous monitoring and reporting of noise levels by Invenergy. And compliance with 43 DVA at all times should be an explicit condition of the EFSP license, so that all violations are penalized with fines, a cease and desist order, and possible revocation of the operating license. And we go on to say the town has also requested that Invenergy post a performance bond or other financial assurance for the benefit of the town to ensure that this condition is satisfied, and that town residents who are adversely affected by noise violations are compensated. Now, in response to our request regarding that bond, they have said, no, they don't believe they can do that. On the other hand, what that means is that the EFSP could go along with this and say continuous monitoring, continuous reporting, continuous requirement with 43 DVA, penalize with fines, which the EFSP has the authority to do, penalize with a cease and desist order, which they have the authority to do, and even possible revocation of the operating license. They can go on to say, as a condition, if they choose to do so, that we won't give you a license unless you post some financial assurances. So, that's all possible. We've asked for all of that in this, and I think it covers it. Okay?
Say no. Say no. Just say no. Yes, say no.
What I'd like to say about this is that as a board, we voted unanimously against, you know, an advisory opinion against the plant, to now discuss any type of waivers, whatever.
If I can correct this, so we voted unanimously that we didn't believe it is compliant with comprehensive...
Compliant with comprehensive.
Correct. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
So, to discuss a waiver, which is in fact part of the comprehensive plan, I think shows a lot of inconsistency on part. And I just don't think that, you know, if we're granting a waiver, then we are essentially, or we're avoiding a four waiver.
With what?
I think we're recommending a waiver, I should say, right? That's, that's what we're doing. I think we are, you know, going against the, what we voted.
Correct. Correct.
I'm still looking for the point where it has anything to do with the low octave band in our regulations. I'm still looking for the point in our regulations where it calls for any information at all on the low octave band.
That's right.
I've seen the 43 decibel, but I haven't found anything on low octave noise levels.
Well, here...
Low octave noise level, sorry.
The, okay, so the applicant is saying that they're gonna meet 43 DVA.
Correct.
Possible.
What they're, what we've been told is that that low band is not something that is possible.
Do we have anything in our regulations, building, town rats, zoning, anything that addresses low octave noise levels, like we have?
I don't believe we do.
Then how can we, then how can we request a waiver for something we don't have in our regulations?
No, it's in the ordinance. The ordinance is a little difficult to read, because the ordinance has two levels mixed into one chart. And the chart has an overall DVA limit. That limit they've committed to meet, they committed under oath that they're gonna meet that. The problem is, the ordinance has a whole lot of these frequency limits that tie into octave bands. And those are the ones that even our own expert has told us are virtually impossible to meet. So, Invenergy has said, you've created a bar that is too high, but you better jump over it. We don't think it's reasonable for you to require this. And our own expert agrees with it. But it is in the ordinance, and there is also a provision in the ordinance that specifically allows for the zoning board to waive it. So, that's, we're making two recommendations. One, it's to the EFSP, and there are two questions to the EFSP. Does it comply with the comp plan? And you have all unanimously voted it does not. That's what this opinion says. The second question that we haven't voted on yet is, is Invenergy able to meet the noise ordinance?
Yes.
And what I'm proposing is that the decision would say they are able to meet the noise ordinance if the zoning board, not us, if the zoning board grants them a waiver from the octave band limits, which basically cannot be met according to our expert.
Okay. From all the information we've been able to gather from our experts and everyone else available, the low octave band has no, has zero negative effects.
No, it has no negative effect at all. The low frequency that is out there in the area is being generated right now by Spectra, and any low frequency that this new facility would generate would be significantly less than Spectra. Therefore, there would be no decrease in the low frequency noise at all.
Okay. So, just as we're making a recommendation to the EFSP, what we would like to see happen, if EFSP should decide to trash this and just go for what they want to do, we still need to come up with something that says a waiver of something.
No, the EFSP is the final licensing body. So, whatever they say goes. We don't have the opportunity to jump out.
So, essentially, our waiver is not...
Essentially, our advisory opinion needs, I'm thinking. It's simply an advisory opinion. The EFSP can take it, they can take it in part, or they can reject it. All right. So, what I've read, what I'm hearing is, we've asked them for a performance bond on this, and they've set it up. Tom, has there ever been a situation before where someone before us has refused to post a performance bond? I can't remember any.
No.
All right. So, that raises a big red flag on my end.
Exactly.
If they're so confident that they can meet it, if they're so confident that it's not gonna be an issue, or they can meet it, why wouldn't they just post the bond?
Exactly.
So, I'm wondering where they're refusing to do that.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to take a moment to echo those comments. We've had scenarios where construction projects, we've asked them to put up performance bonds, guaranteed bonds for such and such a phase of the project, and almost all, always, I'll correct myself, always, they have met those bonds, we've outloved monies in escrow until such work and guarantees have been met. If we would have had a developer come up and we asked for a performance bond or this type of money in escrow, and they say we refuse to do that, we would not allow the project to go through. So, I think we have to give some serious thought to that portion here. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood what Mr. Hessler's comments were, and that was that he had, I believe he had said that he had never seen a power plant be able to maintain that DVA level, either at startup or at shutdown, especially without all the lagging and maybe the additional building requirements surrounding the air ducts. So, however, he said he believed it could be designed that way.
Correct.
Could. Could. Could.
I'm saying what the gentleman said.
The second time. The first time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, if we were voting based on that, I would say that would be fine, but we've had no indication from Invenergy that they have plans on, you know, constructing or making... I said that Invenergy had, had given any indication that they were adding noise to the construction plans.
They have. They've done it in a, in a data response under oath that they would in fact do. Thank you. One of the weaknesses of this entire thing is that we haven't seen plans, so that obviously falls into the, so we are running a bit blind in most of this process. So, gentlemen, we'll take the noise ordinance piece first, okay? So, I'm going to make a motion that we make a positive recommendation to the... Ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna make it, we're gonna vote it, okay? So, it has to be done one way or the other. I'm gonna make it positive. They wrote it down, they voted down. So, just stick with us, please. I'm gonna make a positive recommendation based on our advisory opinion that's here, okay? That we make a positive recommendation to the zoning board that they grant the special use permit for the noise for the plant. Okay?
Include...
To include, yep. Go ahead.
And then...
Absolutely. Suddenly amendment, sir?
To include the waiver for the low level range of noises.
Yes.
We're told are impossible to...
Okay. And with the conditions that were set forth in our advisory opinion here, which is continuous monitoring and reporting of noise levels by Invenergy, and compliance with the 43 DVA at all times should be an explicit condition of the license. All violations are penalized with fines, a cease and desist order, possible revocation of the operating license. Also, that it should contain a performance bond or other financial insurance for the town, and compensation for town residents who are adversely affected by the noises. Thank you. That is, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? So, the motion was for a positive recommendation, okay? I'm going to go by voice vote, please, okay? So, all those in favor say aye. 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 All those, there are four so far. All those say nay. One, two, three. Four to three. So, the motion is, Mr. Tremblay, Mr. Felice, Mr. Ferrera, and myself. And the nays are, Chris, the...
Did we see who it is, like, ratio? So that we can see who's voting what?
Okay. Motion carries for the three. Yes, sir.
It'd be nice to know if we could see by a show of hands actually voting what way.
Maybe we should do the short recess, because I need to look somewhere.
Okay. So, recess in five minutes.
The two on the end voted no, and the blue shirt next to the chairman voted no.
What?
The two on the end voted no, and the gentleman in the blue shirt next to the chairman voted no.
No.
Everyone else voted in favor.
Everyone else voted aye. Two voted aye, I guess?
Yep. And the gentleman in the blue shirt next to the chairman.
And then, so, the chairman in the light blue, and the guy?
No, the gentleman next to the chairman voted no. There was only three noes.
Chairman, give the ayes. Yeah. Chairman, ayes. You have the nays.
At this point, I'm confused. What's your vote this whole time? Which is the better vote?
So they... No. No was the better vote. Which is the better vote?
We wanted the majority to say no.
No was the better vote.
The only thing that's confusing is when we read the whole thing, that it was a bond or...
It went four to three again.
Yes.
Four to three again.
Yeah, so that was my understanding.
Yes. I want to know how many of these gentlemen even live close to the facility.
Yes. That would be a good, that would be an interesting point. How many of them live within a mile, within the five mile I am actually?
I'm asking, I'm thinking with the people who have made last week comments that may be said that really against the points.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm hoping, sorry. Yes, sir. Under RIGL 45-23-63, per en, D, per en, it says, "All votes of the planning board shall be made part of the permanent record. It's shown the members present in their votes. A decision by the planning board to approve any land development or subdivision application requires a vote for approval by a majority of the current planning board membership." And I believe the phrase "current planning board membership" means exactly that. It means you currently have all the spots filled, even though you have one recusal and one absent. Believe the current membership is therefore nine, and therefore it would require five permanent votes. This is a kind of re-voting. This does not prevent you from reconsidering and re-voting. On the other hand, if the vote stays as it is, it would end up not passing.
Okay. Can you read that?
Yes, I'd be glad to. "A decision by the planning board to approve any land development or subdivision application requires a vote for approval by a majority of the current planning board membership."
But we're not, we're not voting on approving any kind of subdivision development.
Yes.
This is a vote, a general vote by the board, but it's not for that degree of application. Is there a difference there?
That is certainly an argument. If you want my thinking on this, my thinking is that while you could make that argument, we might be able to squeak by under that. I think it's more likely that if this ended up in court, the way a court would read it, is they would say, "They have filed an application with us under the land development or subdivision regulations." And that application is before us. And although we cannot approve or deny the application, because the EFSB has that final approval or denial authority, we are making an advisory to the EFSB. And therefore, because the EFSB rules specifically say that you need to follow your usual procedures, and that's in the statute, I believe that that means we need to follow the statute.
If that's the case, sir, then the motion would have failed.
That's correct.
Okay.
Want to re-vote? I'm listening.
I was just going to say that I like all the data that was put into, all the wording that was put into the motion. I think we need to go back over the motion. We can take a second vote just to see if all the information was picked up on by everyone.
Yeah, like you. Changed your mind.
Mr. Chairman, the way that would have to work in the raw rules is that one of the prevailing votes would have to make a motion to reconsider.
Yes.
That would be the first. It'd have to be a motion to reconsider, it'd have to be a second, and then that would be open for discussion. If the motion to reconsider is granted, then you could have a re-vote of the motion.
Would it be advisable just to wait until we have, you know, our full compliments of the board to vote? Even if we did it, not in a public...
What?
No, you have to...
You have to...
Not in a public session. We could do it in a private session.
No, you can't.
Well, you could do it in a special...
Not private. I don't mean private. I don't mean separate.
It has to be public. We are under some time pressure. The zoning board needs our recommendation before the 30th of February. And today's the 22nd.
That gives us eight full days.
I understand. So I guess that's possible.
So that means it's going to be a four to three vote to flip.
Well, we can do that, or we can come up with something more neutral, which is what I'm trying to think of.
What's be neutral?
I'm going to do the motion to reopen, and then we can go vote and discuss it, or do what's for our capital. Okay? So, motion to reconsider, I have, do I have a second? Do I have a second? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. So we can now speak on the motion. There are, if I can start, I think one of the issues might be that no one is comfortable with the waiver of the low octave band. I could be wrong. I don't like it.
Can you lift the air it?
I'm not sure if it's the waiver of the low octave band that's the issue.
Okay.
The language in the motion calls for a positive recommendation to the zoning board concerning the noise ordinance. And I don't know, perhaps, if we were to divide the motion into two parts, so that the first part of the motion deals strictly with the low octave band part, which I think we all understand is impossible for anybody to...
Agreed.
And then, maybe if we jump that road, then we can move to a more specific motion about whether or not we provide a positive or negative recommendation to the zoning board concerning the noise ordinance.
I think that's an excellent recommendation, but I think it's flipped. The recommendation you're making to the zoning board is whether or not they should grant a special use permit on the low octave band only. The recommendation you're making to the EFSB is whether or not they would comply with the overall noise ordinance.
So as far as the zoning board is concerned, our only business with them right now is whether or not they should grant a waiver for the low octave noise.
Well, actually, you have two pieces of difference with that. The only one that's in dispute is, or is in discussion, is the low octave band waiver. You've also given them a negative advisory as to whether or not they should grant the overall special use permit for the project. You've told them no.
That's already in the larger advisory opinion.
Already done. You have told the EFSB and the zoning board that you believe this does not comply with the comprehensive plan, and therefore they should not grant it.
Under the assumption that we vote this opinion in tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
We haven't got the final.
Correct.
So then you have these two little pieces that are... It's number two in the directives that have been given by the EFSB. Will they be able to comply with the noise ordinance? And what I had suggested is they will be able to comply if the zoning board, and ultimately the EFSB, gives them an octave band waiver. Now, we're P to the EFSB, but before we get to the EFSB, you've got to make a recommendation to the zoning board as to whether or not they should grant the octave band waiver.
So that's the discussion.
Okay.
Is the first motion should be granted. Do we provide a positive or negative recommendation to the zoning board in regards to the waiver from the low octave noise requirement of our noise ordinance? I would like to make a motion, unless anybody else has anything to say in that regard, before I jump to the...
I think you're on the right track.
I'd like to make a motion that we make a positive recommendation to the zoning board that the waiver for the low octave noise levels in our noise ordinance can be waived.
Okay. So I...
Can.
Can.
Can?
So it's a positive?
Yes.
So I have a motion for a positive recommendation that the zoning board should grant the waiver.
Let's say no.
Assuming it gets to them.
Correct? Okay. Hold on. Hold on, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Discussion?
With the additional information you had in the first motion, as regards to the performance of air securing?
No, because on this one, they can never comply because it...
No one can comply.
Correct. Correct. So this is simply the low octave band, whether or not we should do that. Okay? So we're back to...
We're back to just voting on the low octave band.
Correct. So we're voting on just the low octave band, whether the zoning board should grant the low octave band waiver. Everybody with that? Okay. Any more discussion?
I've said it before, and I just want to remind everyone, we have given an opinion, we have given an advisory opinion that the, you know, the building of the plant is not in compliance with the town's ordinance. That is a discussion for weight on such important...
Amen. Amen. Awesome.
What you've already, the work you've already done quite successfully, is you have given the opinion that the proposed facility would not comply with the comprehensive plan. The noise ordinance is a separate ordinance in your town ordinances. That's why the EFSB asked you two questions. They said, number one, does it comply with the comprehensive plan? And number two, does it comply with your town noise ordinance? So they really are separate.
It doesn't. It doesn't. It doesn't.
So, right. Now, the reason that this is set up this way, so we have a motion on the floor that we make a positive recommendation to the zoning board. Okay? A yes vote means that we say it's okay, you should grant the waiver. A no vote means they should not grant the waiver.
Yes.
Okay? So in your vote, so your point is, will then be manifested in the vote of no if that's the way that you want to go. Okay? Is everyone clear on how they wish to vote this? Okay. Everybody all set? Any other discussion? Okay. Once again, it will be by voice vote, but we'll need to say who's who. So, all those in favor, say aye. One. One, two, three.
Oh, for God's...
Five.
What's the matter with this?
It is the chair, Bruce, Leo, Mark, Chris.
What?
All those not in favor, say nay. Two nay.
Shameful. Shameful.
So the second piece of this is whether it's on the compliance with the noise ordinance itself.
We have a finding of facts on that vote?
Sorry. What I suggested, Mr. Chairman, was in regards to that, is the language that I have in the draft.
But they didn't read anything about...
Well, those are the conditions.
How many of you live in the vicinity?
Yes, something like nineteen, if you want to look at it. It's right above the requested EFSB conditions of approval. What I've suggested is the following language. Accordingly, it is our opinion that the CREC facility will be able to comply with our noise ordinance, provided the zoning board review grants Invengee a waiver slash special use permit, exempting the CRM-C, CREC, from the octave band limits of the ordinance. Okay. So, you could make that to a motion.
Do we need to vote on that?
Yes.
So it's part of the advisory...
Right. It is, but because of the compliance or lack of compliance with the comprehensive plan was already unanimously voted on, I was able to draft this. There was, however, delay on the vote on the noise at the last meeting. So this is suggested language, but it hasn't been voted on. No, we already voted on the low octave.
Yeah.
Now we're saying, if the zoning board gives them the low octave waiver, then we believe they can comply with the noise ordinance, and we're, of course, asking for all of the conditions that the chairman ran.
I agree with you. I don't know that we have to vote, but... Yep. It's part of my original motion, yes.
Okay.
So... What we reconsider.
I make a motion that it's our opinion that the facility will comply with the noise ordinance if the special use permit is granted by our zoning board, with the conditions that there should be continuous monitoring and reporting of noise levels by Invengee, compliance with 43 DVA at all times should be explicit as a condition of the license. All violations are penalized with fines, a cease and desist order, the possible revocation of operating license, and that Invengee posts a performance bond or other financial assurance for the benefit of the town to ensure this condition is satisfied, and the town residents who are adversely affected by the noise violations are compensated. So that's my motion from the chair. Do I have a second? I have a second. Thank you very much. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just thinking that despite our opposition to the entire concept through the comprehensive plan, which is what we're tasked to do, that all of the evidence that we will provide points to the fact that they, yes, they can meet the noise ordinance. Of course, depending on whether or not they give the waiver from the zoning board, low octave, but yes, they can. So we haven't heard anything that says that they can't.
I agree.
And inclusive, if you look, in this vote will also be the addition of the performance bond as securing that the CREC, all of that, meet all the requirements, should the EFSB prove this sign. That's what the recommendation is about. And I think we need to...
The problem is, we've already had responses that they won't separate one from one.
Exactly.
We've already had a response that they won't, so how can you vote for something?
Okay. Even though they've said they won't, it's what we believe should be a condition. Even though they've said no, it doesn't mean that we can't require it anyway. Also, it's not us that's requiring it, it's the EFSP. So the EFSP is the all-powerful wizard in this case, should be able to require the company to put up this performance bond. It is our recommendation that they should be doing these things as a condition of this particular proposal. So even though they said no, it doesn't mean that the EFSP should not require it anyway. That's our argument, and that's why we're here.
Mr. Chairman, are you able to include in this condition the construction components that would enable them to potentially get down to the forty-three DVA?
I am always open to a friendly amendment, sir. So if we would like to craft one, then we can consider that.
Then I would amend as a condition of this, that in energy be required to follow all the recommendations that Mr. Hessler has laid out. And I would have to get a little bit more specific in terms of going back and reading it, but in terms of the lagging, enclosing the air ducts, I'm particularly worried about startup and shutdown.
Yes, absolutely.
We all are too.
For meeting that DVA, maybe not so much operational running, but from what we've heard, there, again, I believe Mr. Hessler stated that there would not, he has never seen a power plant meet that type of DVA. But he believes that it could be designed, that was his test.
That doesn't mean that those who...
So I just want to amend that if it was designed in the correct way, based on his recommendations.
So your friendly amendment is that the designs are consistent with Mr. Hessler's recommendations and specifications.
That would be correct.
And I have a second on that. Any further discussion? Yeah, all right, so in this case, where we're saying, condition, one of the conditions would be that they have to post performance bond, how would the dollar amount be evaluated? What would the amount be?
Exactly.
If, say if it does not pass for some reason, something goes wrong, all right? And they have to build a building over a building, it could be millions of dollars. So how would we have any idea what that dollar should be?
Shut down. Shut down.
The good thing about what Doug has said is that it would be on the recommendations of Mr. Hessler, who has seen these things been built before. So whatever his recommendation would be, could simply be, well, not simply, but could be costed out to make sure that they comply with what he believes is the design specification. It would be a lot like a subdivision, where we could determine length of road and, you know, current costs and things, and set the performance bond based on that construction estimate.
Had to be sent out ahead of time for your vote.
That way. Okay, any other discussion?
All right, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make a couple comments here with regards to measures for our performance bond, and we talked about language, about cease and desist. If the ES, if the zoning board were to accept these terms correctly, could we not then go back and put details to that? For example, cease and desist would not mean they would shut down the first time they violated. There has to be some language to determine, is it one, two, three times? Could you speak to that for a moment?
I'd be happy to. There are really two levels of enforcement. The first level is the EFSP, and they give it very broad authority in the statute. So they can decide what is reasonable under certain cases. If they hit forty-four DVA for five minutes one day, then the EFSP will do one thing and all of them. If they hit fifty-five DVA for a week, EFSP will do something completely different, much more severe. And they need to be given that discretion, and it's given to them in this section. However, there is a second level of enforcement that is not taken away from us by the EFSP, and that's in our own zoning ordinance. In our own zoning ordinance, it specifically gives us the three things that we've been looking at. It gives us the right to issue a cease and desist order. It gives us the right to fine them for the first fine, first violation, I'm sorry, I have to look it up, I can look it up if you like, but it's a few hundred dollars. And the second violations after that are more money. And then the third thing is, each violation is a separate violation, requiring them to pay the fine. So that's in our zoning ordinance. We can continue to do that, and we can continue to monitor, and we can continue to enforce it, including with a cease and desist order. So two levels of enforcement, EFSP and then us.
All right, okay, I appreciate you, Claire. So I just want to put this up, because it's on the same page here. We've heard from our experts that we would testify that it could be done, and could just not, definitely could be done. So this is why we have to have a lot of teeth into the contingencies of what we just spoke about. It's one thing to take a valve in the manufacturing facility, in a laboratory, and test it under ideal conditions and have it work perfectly, and then to bring something out into a field under real conditions is a separate situation. So I guess my point is that this is a very, very critical item right here to talk about and to make sure that it has the legality and the validity that we need. Because once this starts up, and it doesn't seem to do what it's doing, it's just a matter of paying the fine, paying the fines.
That's right, and it means nothing to them.
It depends on the quality of the call and the resource, that this doesn't just go on forever, we look at the plan, and here we are, we'll just pay as we go.
That's how it's gonna be.
Thank you.
Once it's built, it's too late.
I'd like to add that it wasn't our experts that said that energy will meet forty-three DVA, it was a energy that said they will meet forty-three.
That's right, that's right.
Once it's built, it's too late.
Actually, Mr. Hessler did say that he believed they could meet the forty-three DVA, he said that...
But it's never been done.
It's never been done. Could would be...
At that same being, the energy came back with its representatives, saying that if they would meet the forty-three DVA.
So let's believe that.
Okay, go ahead, Doug. Just one more thing. During some of that noise discussion, I do recall some of the energies experts indicating that the noise would be met just simply due to the guarantee by the manufacturer contract.
Right. Made in China.
Is there any, anything built into that? Obviously, at that point, the contractors are on the picture.
Example.
You know, I mean, if they're talking about, if you're talking about two hundred dollar fines, I mean, there's, there's no incentive, obviously, to meet those types of...
That's their coffee.
Love to accept that.
Yeah, I can, I can address that. The dollar fine, there is no limit to the EFSP like there is in our zoning board. So they can impose whatever is appropriate given the violation.
Shut down.
And that doesn't mean a shutdown. They could absolutely shut the facility down if it doesn't meet. So I, well, I think that's, again, two levels of enforcement, and the EFSP goes all the way up to shutdown and significant fines. But with regard to the EPC guarantee, the EPC guarantee is a big deal. It's millions of dollars if the contractor doesn't meet the requirement. So the contractor is obligated by the contract to fix it so that it doesn't meet.
And I think what my colleague was saying was that there are no parameters in terms of where that level is, right? In other words, isn't, you know, is it fifty-five for a week? Is it, I mean, is there a way of introducing that, or is the statute just, as you say, very broadband and allows for almost arbitrary type of penalties?
On our end, it has the limits that we discussed, but it also has the authority in the town to issue a cease and desist order. On the EFSP end, they again can issue a cease and desist order. And then as I explained, they have the authority to issue any fine that they feel is appropriate under the facts and circumstances of the violation. So if the violation is severe, they could issue a million dollar fine. If the violation is not severe, they could issue a thousand dollars.
But there's no, correct, there's no structure, there's no parameter. In other words, what constitutes a severe violation? What constitutes a minor?
That would be determined after here by the EFSP. I want to mention one thing, Doug, that you started this when you referenced the noise. On page nineteen, in our opinion, we reference that this opinion is based primarily on testimony and recommendations of the town's expert consultant letters slash reports. And then you go to page twenty-one there, in the bullet, the second to the bottom, of course, we list a bunch of those reports. But when you go back to page twenty on noise, we don't actually list anything with Hessler's name on it. Do we want to do that? Is that what Doug was getting to? I'm just saying, I just noticed now that Hessler's reports are not referenced explicitly. Is that okay? Does it imply that they're all going to be attached to this? I guess it's a question for you to...
Personal opinion is, I think, is critical.
Well, yeah, the reason I ask is because of course Hessler clearly did say that lagging and encapsulation of buildings is really the only way to do it, so it's not explicitly listed that way, should we do that? And that's picking up, I think, in your very first point, Doug, right?
And I agree.
That's easy enough to do. Okay, any other discussion? Okay. One second. All right, so, motion on the floor was with conditions to send a recommendation to the zoning board? Okay? No, not the low octave, this is the whole thing, I already took care of the low octave. Okay, everybody good? Okay, so a yes vote is positive, a no vote be negative, okay? All those in favor? One, two, three, four. Although it's not in favor, two and three, okay. So Chair's in favor, Bruce's in favor, Leo's in favor, Mark's in favor. Chris is not, Doug is not, Mike is not. So motion according to your reading, Mr. Maguire, yes. So, okay. I guess we leave it up to the zoning board to decide, because that's the way it's gonna go. So, right. Okay, so...
How about you vote it the other way?
You should have voted the other way.
Okay, let's do it that way then. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I make a motion to send an unfavorable opinion to the zoning board. All those, I'm sorry, do I get a second? Thank you. All those in favor?
I think this is very important.
Doug, Chris, Mike. All those opposed? Mark, Leo, Bruce, Chair. Motion fails. We don't have enough.
You're talking about the little seven.
Correct, okay? Just for this here. Okay, everybody good? Okay, last piece of business hopefully this evening is... Certification, not certification, but acceptance of the advisory opinion. Acceptance of the advisory opinion with the addition of the data from Mr. Hessler.
And the rule of the reference that we just discussed about this, about this little paragraph on page nineteen. Accordingly, it is our opinion that, or the paragraph needs to be struck. Because we just voted against it. Or did not?
It did not pass.
Go back to where?
I believe you're correct. I believe I would have to take that one sentence out, and I believe it would have to be substituted with something along the lines of, depending what was unable to reach consensus as to whether or not the facility would comply with our noise ordinance.
And where, where, where is this, I'm sorry?
So the condition should remain on page twenty. Yes. So on page nineteen, it says, accordingly, it is our opinion that it would be able, the CREC facility will be able to be, I'm sorry, able to comply with our noise ordinance, providing the control of energy or any special use permit, exempting CRC from the octave band limits of the ordinance. So our revision would be that we were unable to come to an opinion that it would be, that the CREC facility would be able to comply with our noise ordinance. Provided the zoning board review grants an energy special use permit, exempting CRC. So, okay, so we're still okay, all right? So it's our opinion, but we were unable to come to an opinion. Do we all have that?
Whether or not zoning could issue a waiver.
We'll, we'll, we'll discuss that. Okay? Yes, microphone.
I just wanted to address this to Mr. Maguire, just to make an opinion. On page seven, I'll read it for you. Finally, the draft advisory concluded that a long-term pumping test of well number three is recommended to evaluate. Could we, can we change that word recommended to, three quarters?
Could you help me here? Seven, which paragraph? Top paragraph? Where it said, recommended to evaluate. That's in a full. I can't change what's in a full.
Okay, okay, all right. I just want, and then, secondly, again, not to wordsmith, but on page twenty-three, second paragraph, it says, this one facility would consume a tremendous of the town's ground load.
Thank you, that's a typo. I'll fix that. All right, that was all, thank you. Okay, so, do I have a motion? The motion, second round of discussion, the motion was to accept the advisory opinion with the changes on page nineteen, and position Mr. Hessler's opinions in the conditions on the future. It's twenty. Okay, so I motion a second. Any discussion? Mr. Chairman, could I ask, based on the vote that's already taken place with regard to the octave band waiver, I would need to add that language to the zoning board advisory. I will do that.
Okay, I believe it's still on page nineteen. It still exists.
The zoning board advisory begins on page twenty-two.
Oh, yes, sir.
And because you hadn't voted on it, I didn't put anything in the draft regarding your advisory to the zoning board on the octave band waiver, so I will add that pursuant to the vote.
Okay. So three conditions. Anyone else?
The motion I made concerning, including the power planning board as part of the review.
Concerning what?
The motion that I made concerning that the EFSP draft or accept the power planning board as part of the review process, would that be attached to this? of void as part of the new process, would that be attached to this?
It's already included, let me find it. It's on page twenty-two. It's at the top, the third bullet, and it currently reads, pursuant to EFSP Rule 1.14 Part B, we respectfully request that the EFSP consider delegating to our board the authority during the construction period, the period to plan startup, and a reporting period to follow, to visit the plan and plant site to determine construction, construction practices. Operational, operation or operational practices are in compliance with the terms of the board's orders.
Just to confirm, we're going to include what Tom had recommended, and that is all of Mr. Hessler's construction recommendations?
Yes. So it is acceptance of the advisory opinion as written, with the changes on page nineteen to reflect the vote that we just took. All of Mr. Hessler's recommendations. And the change to the zoning opinion pages based on our vote. Everyone all set?
I don't see anything in here referring to the Blackstone Valley carter.
I did not put anything in there.
I think that should be, because the Blackstone Valley carter was established and funded by the federal government. And I believe the requirement from the federal government not applying financial compensation to anything that would work against something that they have already financed.
There is no federal financing of this project. You're talking about environmental, you're talking about environmental, I think it's referred to.
How do you know it's financial?
So I think there is language in there about asking the EFSP to conclude, to subject the project to, as well as other projects in the region, to this environmental...
That's correct. No, what I was referring to was that the Blackstone Valley carter was established using federal funds. And should Invenegy apply for federal funds to supplement the force of construction cooperation, I believe the federal funds would be available, because the federal funds have already assisted the Blackstone Valley carter in getting itself established.
The tough part about that is that we don't have anything specific in the comp plan that talks about it. I mean, there is a national park now, if this thing undergoes EIS, I'm falling back to what Marx is, I mean, I would assume that they would have to get the review through section one oh eighty and pull that in, the historic review. That a facility like this is now being located within a national, a watershed, a national park, so I would assume it's gonna get reviewed there. It's not spoken to that specifically in the comp.
So because it's not in the comp plan, we really can rest with that? Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so, motion before you, everyone clear on the motion?
No.
The motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously to accept the advisory opinion with provisions. Okay, Tom, any more business this evening? No, we're all set. Okay, Bruce? Motion, George?
I have more questions than I have answers.